Thank you all for coming to this work session, October 24th, 2024. We'll have a call to order. We have a quorum, it appears. Sandy Sturgill.
Yes, here.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Alana Courtney.
Here.
And Marjorie Austin.
Here.
Having a quorum. Let's move forward and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
I say yes. Alana Courtney.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill.
Yes.
All right. We'll start out with public comment. Mr. Mayo.
My name is William Mayo, 320 Rappahannock Avenue. I had one or two people stop by and talk to me about the ramp at the dinghy dock. Not only the ramp, the steps. It's supposed to be a handicap. It's not. It's terrible. It's a disgrace. Your first step is eight and a half inches, your bottom step is nine inches.
And where's this?
At the dinghy dock. When you step down on the dinghy, the platform of the dinghy dock. They got a little handrail up here just long. And my father was a handicap. So... I don't understand why we can't do this like it's supposed to be done. A handicap is four inches to seven inches, no higher. Four inches is a little overboard. Most of the time, according to the bill inspector, they can do five inches. But he claimed down there as a disaster. He said, "Y'all are waiting for an accident to happen." And I had, last Sunday, a lady went to get down on the dinghy dock. And she almost stumbled on the bottom step. And when she went down to get the steps to get on her little dinghy, she got a splinter. And she said, "I don't mind. Well, we can't put carpet or something down here so people won't get splinters." You know? And down in North Carolina, they have got, your deck is cut out and they got ladders where you can walk down and step on your boat. And we could look at those or something. But that dinghy dock, as far as going on those steps, is terrible. Something could be done. And the bill inspector thought maybe a four-foot platform that you step on. So we'll check in, go down if necessary, and go to the left instead of walking out on the dinghy dock. Go to the left and make a ramp down there. And it wouldn't take a whole lot. We don't need an expert. We've got plenty guys who can do good work and do a good job. But something needs to be done down there. And I hope y'all understand. My father was in, he had polio at 14.
Yeah.
And he had crutches. So...
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
All right.
We need to do something.
Yep. And that's, I have to admit, it's a place that's out of my vision because I never really go down there, but it makes sense that we gotta have that.
So will we talk about it for three years or will we do something?
Is that something that Steve is able to take care of?
Mr. Mayor.
And Oyster Festival always has a ramp down there for the stuff that they do, right?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Members of council. What I'd like to do is I'd like to talk with the building official and kind of maybe do an inspection with him, take a look at it.
Yes.
I'm also got a note here that maybe this could be rolled into the docks of the bay.
Exactly.
Now, while we do have folks that anybody can do this, if it's not done right, who do we go after?
Right.
Okay, so let's do it the right way and see if we can get some professionals to take a look at it first and plan it out.
As long as we do it.
Okay. Action items, number seven. Do you want to present that? Mr. Costa.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. The first item I have this evening is invoice forgiveness request from A.B. Gravitt. Mr. Gravitt went before the Historic Architectural Review Board in order to permit a fence on his property. The application was approved, but the application notes it's a $100 fee plus the advertising cost. Now, the applicant, as well as two other applicants that went before the board that night, were billed for one-third of the newspaper advertisements, which came out to $82 each. In addition, but individually, each applicant was billed for notification to all their adjacent properties. These notices, which now cost $9.64 per notice as they're required to be made via certified mail. The... Because it's, the overlay district is part of the zoning ordinance, the Gravitt application had 16 adjacent properties to be notified. So the resulting mailing cost was $154.24 for a total of $236.24. Mr. Gravitt has come in, he talked to me, and he asked that the bill be forgiven, citing his willingness to allow the property to be used for, at various times, for various functions. The fiscal impact on this request is none if it's not approved. If it's approved, it's a $236.24 loss. Staff is not recommending this for the simple reason other people are billed the same way. Other people pay it, and it might set a concerning precedent. So the council action that's requested and recommended is to deny the request. I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
So just to be clear, these are costs that anybody that goes before Harb or the BZA or anyplace where there's a mailing because of an adjacent property, everybody would be treated equally, and it's only a function of the fact that his property is large enough, he's got 16 adjoining properties that has made the bill so large. Is that right?
To some extent, yes, and to some extent, no. So let me break it down. The application, and there's a copy of the application in your packet, right at the top of the application fee, it says, "Hundred-dollar application fee must be paid. Further, the applicant agrees to pay all required advertising and postage costs." Okay? That's not how it works for the BZA. That's not how it works for the planning commission or council relative to special uses and rezonings and that sort of thing. This is the only one that's set up like this. But the way this is set up, it's been equally applied. I know since I've been here, but I've run across a couple of other cases where they were billed and paid.
So the others are flat fees?
The others are flat fees. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Have the other individuals who went before the board at the same time and were assessed a third of the advertising fee paid their fees?
They've paid their fees, plus whatever their, they paid their share of the advertising, plus whatever their notifications were.
But theirs would have been much less, probably.
Luck of the draw, yeah.
I mean, but their properties were not as large as maybe.
Not as large, didn't have as, yeah, didn't have as many adjacents, yeah.
Was he surprised?
Yeah, he was not too happy. But...
Because he had no idea there were 16 people that had to be notified?
I guess he did not know that. But I sat down with him, I showed him the map, showed him who got them, actually showed him all the certifications that went out, the ones that came back. But again, he said, in light of the fact that he's allowed his property to be used for so many different things, he would like for the $236.24 to be forgiven.
Does that include the initial $100 for the application?
No, the $100 is, has been received.
Okay, that was made.
We don't process the application, any application until we receive the money.
Uh-huh.
So that, the $100 has been received.
And so this is basically a one-off in the sense that the property is so large that the costs are considerable compared to what you would normally have to deal with.
That's correct. And again, by the statute, you have to notify all the adjacents, and the statute defines adjacence as those across the street. So even folks across the street hadn't been notified, even though they touched the property.
I got notification. I was trying to think of 16 places, 15 other places.
Look at the map. Look at the map.
I did, I couldn't make, I couldn't make any sense of it.
My concern is
I'm getting to where I am on the map.
That we've got someone who has, who owns a very large valuable property asking for consideration that do we set a precedent for everybody else who doesn't have that level of wealth by giving him a discount or a break when we don't give them?
Right.
We can't do it.
It's unfortunate. I mean, it's unfortunate, but...
I appreciate everything Mr. Gravitt does, without a doubt, but...
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we deny the forgiveness of the $236.54 associated with advertising.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Do we have, just in further discussion, I guess it gives its heads up, although I don't have any other properties in town that would fall into that kind of category that you'd be dinged like that. But the only other way around it is, as we revise things, to consider changing it so that it's a flat fee like the other things that have evolved. But in this case, that would, I mean, you can't do it retrospectively.
But if the statute requires
Right, we have to follow the statute.
We have to follow the statute.
Right. That's where I'm in agreement. Any other discussion? All right. Sandy Sturgill.
So what's that? Yes is what? Yes is what?
Yes is we deny, yes is we deny the request.
Okay, yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Alana.
No.
I say yes.
Yes.
All right. All right. Moving on. And now, I guess you might as well stay up there.
All right, so...
A sort of dovetails with what we just discussed.
Yes, it does. The next item is just a sort of a report back. The mayor, myself, Motha, had a really nice meeting with delegate Hodges, excuse me, Keith Hodges, last, earlier, earlier this week. And we had four, four items that we wanted to go over with him. And Andrea, our town attorney, called in. The first is charter legislation. We've had a couple of situations where we couldn't quite get to a quorum, and the question came up, as well as the mayor part of the quorum. And for the purposes of voting and for taking, taking the establishment of quorum, we need to go back and clarify the charter, that the mayor is a member, a voting member of the council for the purposes of establishing a quorum. The town attorney will draft that up and will certainly bring it back before you, before it goes on to legislation. But the delegate said he would be happy to carry that clarification on the charter. So that was the first item we talked about. Anybody want to, you want to add?
It just, I'm so surprised that we didn't make that clear with the previous charter change on this voting issue. And so apparently you all have really checked this. It's not clear?
Well, we had, in the discussions, we had said that we should make our charter read in a similar fashion to Herndon's, where in the description of council, what it says is council is, it, Herndon says council consists of six members of the public, elected, you know, whatever, and a mayor. Okay? Ours just says council consists of six individuals, the majority of which are need to be present for a quorum. So in Herndon, it's clear in that the council is six members and a mayor. And ours still says, that was something that was supposed to be changed, but we didn't pick it up.
Didn't, maybe it's not in the same area. When we, when we were granted a charter change a year and a half ago, not that long ago, on the question of whether or not the mayor would be a voting mate?
Yeah, that was four years, almost four years ago.
Has it been that long?
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
The previous council.
Well, it was the previous council, true.
Yeah.
And when that was made, was it not clarified in that action?
It was clarified that the mayor can vote in that, but it was missed that they weren't a member of council.
For, it is critical for the determination of a quorum.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so that came up when, when we had some absences, and I wasn't allowed to vote in the roll call for a quorum, even though I could have voted for anything that would have passed.
Interesting.
And so it's a technicality that you could, you could say, well, it only makes sense because they're allowed to vote here, that they can be a part of a quorum. But if we voted on something and that were challenged because it's not clear, whatever we pass might get thrown out.
Okay.
Well, let's do it.
So...
The next item that we spoke with the delegate about was notice legislation. We just talked about this a little bit, about Mr. Gravitt's situation. And we specifically talked about Mr. Gravitt's situation with the delegate. This has kind of been a pet peeve of mine for a few years, that if you are doing notices over 500, like if you were doing a comprehensive rezoning of a county or something, the person who's responsible for sending those notices can send those out first class and just do an affidavit. But anything less than that, you have to send it out certified. So it's like, your word is good, over 500, but not under 500. I don't know, the wisdom of the journal assembly. So, and the certification cost or certified letters is just, I mean, it's almost $10 a letter now. And you're sticking letters into the Urbana slot. They're going through certified and they're moving from one box to another box. I mean, it's just, you know, and, you know, it just happens to be a lot of Urbana addresses, but it's a substantial amount of money. What we have discussed with him is the possibility of lightening up on that certified mailing requirement, see if he could drop back to, everything goes through first class with an affidavit. As a fallback, it could be, now that would be a benefit to every locality across, across the Commonwealth. As a fallback, he said he could probably, you know, as a fallback position, do towns with populations less than, you know, to give, to give us, you know, a break in other towns similarly situated. So that's what we talked about, and he was pretty sure that he would be able to, if not sponsor that himself, find somebody with a lot of towns that would be willing to sponsor it. Okay? Again, it was a very, very productive meeting. It was super. The next thing we talked about was the status of the DMV. So here's the latest. Did send a letter to the commissioner letting him know that we were having good conversations with the county, that we were making some headway. We had a couple of questions. Could they answer the questions? What I got back was an email from one of his subordinates that basically said, "Thanks for the, thanks for the update. I think it's great you guys are working together, but our analysis shows that you no longer need to have a DMV select in the area." Which I think is interesting because six to eight months ago, they were beating us over the head about keeping it.
Right.
So he took all that information and he's going to speak to the commissioner. We also provided him with the tally sheet of how many DMV selects were out there and how much money they were making. So we're kind of in a, in a holding pattern to see what he can come back to us with. And the last one was a topic that came up at a recent meeting about the speeding. So let me let you know that I did reach out to VDOT in the sheriff's office about getting the temporary speed warning signs established. Shortly after I did that, I saw one on the other side of the bridge, okay? Out by Rose Gill. And then a few days later, I saw one on the other side of town. So they got put out on the opposite ends of town, but not in town. So I'm going to do a little bit more follow-up on that, as will the delegate. But he also said that he, there was some legislation, Motha found that had a provision that for towns without police departments, they could set up the camera ticketing system. Okay? And so the, if, once those are installed, then the tickets would automatically be written off of, of the camera.
And where do those come from?
We're not sure yet. I think, I think they come from VDOT because they're the ones that would be doing, kind of setting the speeds. And I think there was also some other, now that was a piece of legislation that has been put in, I think it's, it might be a study. I'm not sure if it's a...
It was, last year, it was sort of kicked down the road and it's in transportation now. It's HB 20 is the bill, and so it still has to go through. But it's, I saw an article about, there's a town who's really is pushing for this.
Good, that's great.
Problem. So, I mean, it's, it's in baby stages. It'll get ripped apart and torn apart since this is...
So maybe my lifetime.
So who does the ticket, the ticket income go to?
My inclination is it would be going to the same people that enforce it anytime, would be the sheriff's office. It would be coming over to the county.
They won't get it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they can make a lot of extra money putting one on Rappahannock.
I've always wondered, since we have a playground, a park down Rappahannock, why we didn't have a playground of children's, a slow side there.
There, there.
There is one.
Yeah.
At the, on Rappahannock.
Yeah, it says children at play.
Mm-hmm.
It's a yellow one.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think that's, that's... I think that's, yeah, that's one of the things, like the sign says, you know, or the song says, "Sign, sign everywhere, sign." And after a while, and I've heard this from VDOT, the more signs you put up, the less, the less people see them because they just blend into the landscape, yeah.
Well, an automatic ticketing thing, that would really take care of the problem, I think.
Yeah, especially...
One rounded ticket.
I mean, I hate to say it, but that got to slow down. That's terrible.
Mr. Mayor, Motha, y'all have anything you want? I mean, that's, that's basically how the meeting went.
He also talked about the, how we can lower the speed limit.
Oh, yes.
So, but there's all sorts of conditions that have to be met. We can lower it.
To 20 or 15?
No less than 15.
No less than 15.
No less than.
Well, what's the point if they won't pay any attention to 35?
Throwing it out there.
Yeah.
You know? There's no perfect solution.
Yeah. Oh, I think this solution is certainly worth looking into and doing.
Yep, I got nothing else on that.
Okay, move on then. All right, the next item is Virginia Street Terminus stabilization. So during an onsite meeting with representatives of Dock of the Bay in advance of the planned shoreline stabilization at the town marina, I noted this earlier, the mayor and I met with their representative, and subsequently, we've received a proposal from them, and the proposal is in your packet. This work could be done in concert with the Marina project, which is slated to start after Oyster Festival. In addition, the planning aspect is weather dependent. The warmer the weather, the better for the planning getting done and setting up. Also, into the, over time, the plants will root out and send up new growth. Okay? So keeping that in mind, I asked about if we could reduce the cost of the plantings. And they estimated that we could reduce half the number of plantings proposed, and it's on the last page of the item. We could reduce by one-half all the plants, and it would save about $1,600. So you're, you're kind of looking at between 1,300, 400 with half the plants, or as proposed, 15,000 with all the plants proposed. My recommendation is to go with the lesser amount of plantings because if you overplant the area, you're not going to be able to access it. And I know we've talked about wanting to have some, like a sitting area, a little park area down there, some signage. But if you pack it up with plants that are going to grow themselves, you're going to, it's going to just become a vegetative jungle down there.
And it would be good to have it in a, in like an S-shaped pattern or something so that it changes the flow, but allows for a path to go through there, like it's a waterman's park.
So my recommendation is accept the bid, let's authorize the work, and, but do it at the lesser planting rate of 1,300, 400. Be happy to take any questions.
Tell us about the money to cover this. We have this budgeted.
It's not budgeted.
It's not budgeted.
It's not budgeted, but you've...
Is it covered by any of our other improvement grants down there?
No.
I figure not.
The improvement grant is for the Marina property. There is, though, the, you've got good reserves. You can, you can dip in and take it from reserves.
Okay.
So what, was, is Dock of the Bay sharing any of the costs since their equipment was there for so long and a lot of damage was done down there?
No, 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 no.
No, it's not.
No, it's the same spot.
Oh, is it the same spot?
It's the same, it's the same spot.
Okay, I thought you were talking about
Paine's.
Stabilization down at the Marina.
That's self-ordered.
No, no.
You're talking about Paine's, okay.
We're talking about Paine's.
This is just for Paine's.
The Virginia, Virginia Street Terminus.
Okay, okay.
So, or what people would know as Paine's.
13,000 for that tiny little thing? Good lord.
So was Dock, as I asked, was Dock of the Bay going to take any of that?
I asked them about that and...
Can we only have one person talk at a time, please? Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Austin, to your, to your question, did Dock of the Bay say that they would be willing to cut something back because of the use of the property previously? They said no. And the reason they said no is, part of the trade-off was that for their use of it, they would pull out some of the old pilings and some other things that were out in the water and clear it. And that apparently was the deal.
I thought that there was something about that in the past, but no more had been said, so that's why I'm checking.
Yeah, and their, their stance is that, and it's all verbal agreement, that they have done what they agreed to do.
Yeah, well, they did. So let me ask you then, if people back down or drive down there over top of this, they're just going to mess it up, right?
Well, that, that's where the signage comes in with the...
Because they're down there daily.
Yeah, this, this has got, this has got to be one of those situations, kind of like, you know, socks then shoes. We got to stabilize the area, then we can put in the signage that says no parking. You know, you've got those, I think there's some, some benches at the Marina, picnic tables at the Marina. They can be moved in there, and those things are heavy.
Yep.
So that can easily serve as, as something to kind of block, you know, further, further block people going, you're driving. Having looked at it the other day, as you're, as you're coming down the street, where there's, there's a, on the right-hand side, if you're looking at the water on the right-hand side, there's a telephone pole or a power pole. That's where it kind of breaks to come around in front of the condominiums. That would be the perfect place to put a picnic table and kind of block because that keeps that 20-foot easement open that people get around. But then it leaves you the other area, like where the sign is for museum in the streets. And you can have your no parking sign and your picnic table. It would really lock it up.
Where that easement, that easement is open for the public to go down and see the waterfront.
Yes.
But it used to be, you know, the gravel that's in front of the condos, that gravel strip.
Right.
That did come all the way up until Dock of the Bay came in there. That path was a pathway, and people used it. It's not a pathway anymore.
Now, by my understanding, most of, most of this planning is going to take place from that power pole down. So it still keeps...
Well, and that's not going to help any of that other.
Well...
No, it's not.
It's, it's either, then you're going to have to plant further up, and now you're blocking that access path.
Well, I think that gravel, that, that pathway, that for the public to walk in, the public has no place, and this has been an argument for a long time. They have no place to walk and see the water. This is a dedicated easement for the public to use.
Correct.
Right, the, the 20...
We should give the public some gravel down through there, like it used to have. We should put it back.
A path, you're talking about. And, and you're also talking about a path, or bill was, bill was.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's 20 20s of, I don't know how big number, 57 stone is.
That's big and it's ugly.
Okay.
It's not like what they had before down there. They had like pea stone.
Yeah, that pea gravel, just like we got it joined in and looked exactly the same.
Would you like for me to...
Add a path.
Which, well, yeah.
To join into the, the path that goes into the condos. That's what we're talking about.
Right, uh-huh. And that's a dedicated easement for the public.
All right, so how about we defer this? My suggestion would be to defer this. And, but for timing, they're going to go ahead, they're going to have to go ahead and do the Marina project.
Yeah.
Because of, okay.
Well, I would think a load of pea gravel down through there while the guys were working, they could sort of do it.
Maybe you could negotiate a little bit with them on a couple of these things for what they didn't do, what they caused and have not fixed.
I think, if you recall, the gravel is actually going to be laid out along in parallel to the core logs.
Yes.
That's going to act like a French drain. So when the water comes down, it hits the gravel, and then, you know, it slows that down, it goes on to the next layer. But, so I think that amount of gravel is going to have to be in there regardless. But what you're looking for is pea gravel path. But what you're looking for is pea gravel path. What I'd like to do.
I think we need to ask for a site design.
I was going to say for a sketch. I've already written, now can we, can we sketch this out? Okay.
I could, I have pictures of what it looked like before they came.
We, we do too, we do too. Yeah.
I'll put it back like it was.
Your pictures are not the ones that were in the paper. If you could send that too.
Okay, yeah.
So can't that path that needed to be back there, like Sandy's saying, can't we go ahead and, and go ahead and approve this and get that work, you know, started?
You could, but I don't know what the additional cost on the pea gravel is going to be.
Okay.
That's the picture that's in the paper.
Well, you could approve it for 15. Then if there's not an, you know, if it's less than, we don't pay 15. I can't imagine pea gravel's going to cost $1,600.
What's the down, what's the downside of waiting for, to get more information and to get a site plan? Or sketch?
I was, I was hoping that they could do both at the same time, stage up, but they've, they've priced this at a, at two separate stagings, so that's not going to change that much. I would anticipate what you might be able to do is if you cut the, if you cut the plantings in half, you might end up going back to 15 with, with gravel.
That's what I was saying, just approve it for 15, if they, and then see what the gravel is. But go ahead and tell them to get started, so it can be done in conjunction with one another.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to hold it up, but I think that.
Not that the, the path isn't important, it's just, this is.
I mean, the path is for the town people to use.
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
You want to go?
Are we talking about, are they starting with the Marina work first and then doing this second?
They're doing the Marina work first.
Okay.
We were hoping that they would be able to stage up at the same time and do them together.
But the Marina work is estimated to take approximately how long? It's not going to happen overnight?
No, it's probably a week, a week.
Is that all?
Mm-hmm, a week. But you have to get scheduled in, and we're scheduled in right after Oyster Festival for the Marina project. This one has not been scheduled in.
Okay.
And the Marina project is not replacing what is.
May I say something? I believe next month is November. I think there's only one council.
Oh, there is.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Let's go ahead and do it and approve it for the 15,000. If we have to add a little bit for the gravel at another time, that's one thing, but I can't imagine gravel would be 16,000, I mean, $1,600.
Could we approve it for the 13,4 or 13,6, whatever it is that we're proposing?
13,4.
And then talk to them about adding. You know, that would be another way.
Because it's going to have to be, it's going to be scheduled, doesn't it?
Because, yeah, because all of this is going to have to be done anyway, and by then it would be on the schedule, and if we can get a path, we get a path.
Yeah, but if we give Ted the permission to go up to 15,000.
Okay, that's a different.
That is, that is, he's going to do the 13,4 with the gravel, he can go up to 15,000 without.
Without seeking additional council, council permission. Is that permissible?
Yeah, that makes sense.
That does make.
That's what I'm saying.
That does make sense.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make the motion that the town administrator to accept the proposal by Dock of the Bay in the amount not to exceed 13,400 for the living shoreline, and can go up to as much as 15,000 with gravel added for the path, as presented to stabilize the terminus of Virginia Street.
Okay.
When do I ask a question?
No.
Okay.
You have a second.
No, you got a second first.
We need a second first, and then we can discuss it.
Right.
All right, I'll second.
Okay. I still think we need a sketch.
A site plan.
We need a sketch or a site plan. So we could, we could authorize Ted, we could amend Margie's motion to include that we would pass that with a sketch of the site plan and, yeah, and as approved by Ted. Up to 15,000, including gravel, the pea gravel. I think, I think we need a site. We need a site.
Well, there is a drawing. It says, there is a permitted drawing. I'm not sure, we didn't come in our packet, but it says there's a drawing.
That may be enough if we can see it.
I don't believe we received the drawing. I, I think that's a standard that they put in their document. I, I did not see a drawing.
You're going to need a drawing. You've got.
Yeah.
Maybe we should, maybe we should table the motion until, until we get a drawing, and then we'll bring it up at the next meeting. We also have an easement to get up to there.
That's what we're talking about, is the easement, Larry.
We've recognized.
Making it a path.
Just all the easement, the easement exists. We know where it is.
Where's the 15,000 coming from?
Just put gravel on it.
It's not in the budget, it's, but you've got it in reserve.
A reserve on?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion that we table it until we get a site plan.
Well, we got a motion.
You got a motion on the floor.
So, but how do we, how do we push the, if we vote the motion down, can we bring it back up again?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
But you, or you could just simply ask for the motion to be withdrawn, so you all could recraft something else.
Yes.
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion.
How to do the motion.
Doesn't make sense not to get something started.
Get it started. Go ahead and get it started.
That's what I'm saying. 13,400 to get it started with the other projects, the other projects a week. We still, we won't have but one meeting in November. And that's why I said up to 15 for the, the 1600. It shouldn't cost $1,600 for some rock.
Well, we could come back.
To go in that path. We can come back on that at another time, but just.
We still need an approved, an approved plan for the gravel, but not for this.
For everything.
I think the consensus is we want to see a, a physical plan. It's not the, it's not the money, it's a, just a rough sketch as to where different things are going to go.
I, I believe if you, even if you want to wait till next month, what you can, if you authorize something to happen, they can go ahead and do the stabilization and come back if it's not too, remember, it's weather dependent on the plants. They may have to come back in March and April and do the planning. And they'd be willing to work with us on that as well.
And I guess they realize those plants have got to go in specific places because of that easement.
Right.
So that's why I think we need a drawing to make sure that's right. But I'm with you.
Our next meeting is November what?
14th.
14th.
So just defer to the 14th?
We're not getting any spec, any discount or consideration.
No.
It's priced completely separately from the work they're already doing down there, so that doesn't, that doesn't, that have an adverse impact on us for not approving it now.
Correct.
And we're only talking about three weeks, so that, I mean, it makes sense to me to.
Yeah, but if they're going to start right after Oyster Festival, it'll probably be before we have our next meeting. So.
For the one project, yes.
For the terminus of Virginia Street.
What difference does it really make? I mean, we're not, spring is when, I mean, we want it done soon, but it won't be much use. I, I think it'd be nice to see a drawing, a rough, rough idea where things are going, so we can.
And depending upon weather dependent, they may not be able to plant anyway until spring. I think there's a chance that could happen. Because we don't want to invest in all the plantings and have them die.
I don't think they would put them in in a spot where they.
I hope not. But you, you don't know what the weather's going to do.
Right.
Is there any guarantee?
No.
But the other side of it is, is, you know, it's $15,000. That's town money, and we need to make sure it's right before we do it. And one way of making sure is by having some kind of a drawing. It may not be right, but at least we got to do everything we can to make sure it's right. Exactly. Yeah, let, let's push it to, my suggestion is to push it based on that to the next.
I withdraw my motion.
All right. All right.
All right.
But in the meantime, right after Oyster Festival, we're doing the others. All right. Any announcements? No announcements? We need to go into closed meeting. And.
I'll make a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to code as, as presented on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Do we have any discussion on that?
Nope.
All right. Margie Austin?
Yes.
Larry Tuning? I'll let the record show that Larry Tuning has joined us.
I did.
I say yes. Alana Courtney?
Yes.
Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Okay.